Thank you very much. I call the meeting of August 23, 2022 of the DuPage County Board to order. And may I ask Mr. Don Pachowski, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then please remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For invocation, I welcome Pastor Mike Myers, Michael Myers, from Faith Baptist Church in Winfield, to lead us this morning in invocation. Pastor Myers.
Good morning. Thank you so much for serving our county. We appreciate all that you do for us. Let me pray for you. Father God, I thank you for this day. It's a day that you have made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. I appreciate all my fellow citizens of this county and how they serve us so well. And I pray your blessing on each of them. Give them great wisdom and discernment so that they can govern in such a way that puts the needs of our county in line with your perfect will for our county. I pray this in the name of Jesus, the Lamb of God, who takes away the sin of the world. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Before we do roll call, I'd like to seek a motion to permit Mr. Schwartz to participate remotely.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. The ayes have it. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
And I share my condolences to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Deputy Clerk, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Here.
Member Covert.
Here.
Member DeSart.
Here.
Member DeCiani.
Here.
Member Akoff.
Here.
Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Hart.
Here.
Member Krajewski.
Here.
Member LaPlante.
Here.
Member Ozog.
Here.
Member Pachowski.
Here.
Member Renahan.
Here.
Member Rutledge.
Here.
Member Schwartz.
Here.
Member Solomon.
Here.
Member Tornatori.
Here.
And Member Zay.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. On the Order of Chairman's Report, we have a couple of proclamations and presentations. First and foremost, I'd like to invite Member DeSart, Karen Ayala, Karen Doyle, Cara Murphy to the podium, if I may, please. DuPage County was recently ranked, come on down, ranked once again as the healthiest county in Illinois. How do you like that? That is not an accident. That is, quite frankly, by design. Our collaboration with healthcare partners is really remarkable and outstanding. I know this based on my experiences working with and advocating for our partners as we sought to provide testing and COVID vaccines. There we are. Come on in. Over the past two years, and I witnessed firsthand, I was immersed in the collaborative effort with the healthcare leadership, the private sector, all the different partners. It's just been really impressive. These relationships are crucial as we strive for healthy outcomes for our residents. However, every county, DuPage included, is faced with making sure all people have access to healthcare. And we are making those connections. Today, with Member DeSart, we join the nation in marking Free and Charitable Clinic Month. Today in particular, we honor our DuPage Health Coalition, the board, the staff, President Cara Murphy, Karen Doyle, here presenting organizations that make those essential connections between our residents who need healthcare and the medical services that they seek. So I'm going to read this proclamation real quick, and then I'm going to invite Karen and Member DeSart and our leadership here to share a few thoughts with us. So whereas DuPage Health Coalition, every DuPage County hospital and thousands of local medical volunteers join their fellow Illinois free and charitable clinic partners to improve access to high-quality healthcare for low-income uninsured residents of our community. And whereas, in FY 2022, DuPage Health Coalition, believing that our entire community thrives when everyone is healthy enough to work and care for their families, served more than 6,000 DuPage County residents in need of access to comprehensive healthcare through their Access DuPage and Silver Access programs. And whereas, DuPage Health Coalition, dedicated to making our communities healthier, faced the challenges presented by the COVID-19 pandemic by facilitating access to 70,000-plus units of PPE and navigating vulnerable community residents to more than 6,000 vaccinations. And whereas, DuPage Health Coalition and all free and charitable clinics in Illinois are truly an invaluable resource for Illinois residents and without adequate insurance, residents who don't have adequate insurance and they provide access to life-saving medical care. Therefore, now be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, do hereby proclaim August 2022 to be Free and Charitable Clinic Month in the county of DuPage. I'll entertain a motion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. The ayes have it. It acted this 23th day of August 2022. Thank you so much for the good work you do. It's remarkable. Thank you.
I'll just underscore the fact that what you guys do in our community is just priceless. Thank you so much for everything you do. Now I think Karen has to be with us.
Yeah, we do. This is the K contingent. Can everybody hear me okay? It sounds like it is. First, just a huge thank you. You know, much like in many other ways, DuPage County handles healthcare for the uninsured a little bit differently than in other communities. But in the last 21 years, more than 65,000 DuPage County residents have been enrolled in the Access DuPage program. And that is possible only because of the partnerships and the co-creating of this program over the last 21 years by, as Chairman Cronin mentioned, every hospital in DuPage County, thousands of volunteer physicians, hundreds of community-based organizations that serve as volunteers for us. So any success that we have is the success of our collective efforts. And as difficult as these last several years have been for everyone in this room and everyone in this county, I couldn't be more proud to serve alongside of the likes of Karen Ayala and my partners in this effort. So thanks so much. I will say that quietly, depending on the year, this is the largest free and charitable clinic program in the state of Illinois. Sometimes we trade off with the community health clinic in the city of Chicago. I think this year is ours, and it's our blessing to be able to continue to do this work. Thank you.
One of the really exciting things about working with the Health Coalition is the model that they have for sustainability and for providing these services. And as a board member of the Health Coalition, we often talk about what's our fair share? What's the right thing to do with our healthcare systems? And through Cara's leadership, Karen's support, and my new friend, Sam, they've been able to take that and extend it, realizing that, yes, healthcare really is a human right, and that every resident should enjoy that right. So we couldn't do our work without the Health Coalition, and we very much appreciate it, and really think it's one of those jewels in the crown of DuPage County. Thank you.
A lot of Karen's doing on. Thank you. I'm Cara.
To the record.
Almost every time I will answer the question.
Next, we have a proclamation of commendation to DuPage County Health Department and Karen Ayala. And, you know, we've been through so much together. And I think while we talked about the Health Coalition just moments ago, we need to really also recognize our public education and our leadership in education. And so I'm going to invite Darlene Rossetti, superintendents up here that have joined us, Member Tornatori, and Karen, please join me here. Just a few moments ago, as I said, we talked about a response to the pandemic and how essential it was that we pulled all the healthcare partners together for testing and vaccines and information to our residents. And I think I'll never, ever forget that whole experience. And I'm sure all of these education leaders here will not forget the challenges and the time that we confronted this terrible pandemic. Our high vaccination rate and our nimble, rapid response to the changing pandemic are due in large part to the dedication of the DuPage County Health Department, without a doubt. COVID-19 impacted every facet of our lives, and one of the most significant areas of impact was on our children and their education. DuPage County's Regional Office of Education, led by Dr. Darlene Rossetti, and the superintendents that are gathered here today, and you're going to introduce them, if you would, Darlene, in just a moment, they needed data. They needed guidance. They needed best practices. I can't tell you how many conversations I had with folks who were mad and veins were popping out of their neck, and they're telling me that we've got to tell the educators what to do. And I was like, no, 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 no. Our focus is on public health. Their focus is on education. You know, we offer guidance. You trust your local leadership. Take it up with your school board. It was an incredibly difficult and challenging time. And I have enormous amount of respect, I think all of us, we all have an enormous amount of respect for your leadership and the challenges that you faced during the pandemic. And so I want to say thank you very much to all of you. And Karen, please, would you be kind enough, I want to invite you to the podium to share a few thoughts. But first and foremost, would you, Darlene, Dr. Rossetti, would you introduce all these wonderful superintendents?
I think it'll go much quicker if they introduce themselves.
Okay. All right. There you go.
She didn't want me to test her.
Yeah, there you go. Please, start back here.
Adrian Townley, Indian Prairie School District, too.
Melissa Kispowski.
And Jeremy Dawson.
Mark Castillo, Indianville District 2.
Mary Henderson, Roselle School District 12.
John Bartel, Bloomingdale School District 3.
Amber Quirk, H33.
Sam Prudus, Central District 16.
Darlene, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Chairman Cronin. Chairman Cronin, thank you all county board members, you know, for everything that you do on behalf of education and for the Health Department, you know, as well. But in our superintendents, thank you all for being here today. I know, like, schools were in like yesterday and today, most of them. So taking your time away today, I know how valuable that is. So thank you so much. So I mentioned schools. Most of our students are in from yesterday and from today. And in large part due to the tremendous work by our superintendents, educators. But I will tell you, we couldn't have done even the opening of this school year without the DuPage County Health Department and your team. I mean, you know, Chris and Mela and all of the folks within your department were such a tremendous help to each and every one of us, okay? And I know we weren't always, you know, as thoughtful and kind as we usually are on any given day. Yes. But I will say this. I will say this, Karen. You and your team, you always acted from your value system. You led with integrity and honesty, gave us the facts that we needed to, you know, help us make, you know, really good decisions. And we also recognized, too, that your job wasn't just to get our kids in school. It was to save lives. And that is something that you did with, it's priceless. So just thank you on behalf of all of the educators, all of the superintendents, the school districts, the private schools in DuPage County. Thank you very much for all that you've done.
So I wanted to make sure we introduced all the superintendents up here. And so I'm going to read the proclamation commending the Health Department and Karen Ayala. Whereas Karen Ayala serves Executive Director of DuPage County Health Department. And whereas Karen Ayala personifies the DuPage County Health Department's values of integrity, collaboration, accountability, respect, and excellence. And whereas Karen Ayala has dedicated her career to achieving the goals of public health through prevention, promotion, and protection. And whereas, as in all professions, there are people who surpass their peers, both in terms of their vision and their ability to mobilize and engage others to attain that vision. Karen Ayala is such an individual who demonstrates exceptional and courageous leadership in support of public health and our schools. And whereas Karen Ayala made herself and the Health Department staff readily available, always available, incredibly accessible, available to the DuPage County superintendents and their nurses and frankly, everyone, business community. Whereas Karen Ayala and her staff ordered, offered resources whenever possible, assisted with school district vaccination efforts, provided necessary guidance, responded to thousands of emails, and answered thousands of phone calls on behalf of DuPage County schools and their students. And whereas Karen Ayala was willing, always willing, to share and represent DuPage County schools' interests and concerns, the Illinois Department of Public Health. And whereas Karen Ayala has gained the respect and admiration from the DuPage County superintendents for her strong leadership, unwavering adherence to her core values, her authentic caring for what was happening in our schools, and her willingness to make difficult decisions. And whereas Karen Ayala did all of this while maintaining a sense of humor. And she sure did, and her sanity. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the DuPage County Board, members of the Board, together with Darlene Rossetti, Regional Superintendent of Office of Education, DuPage County, do hereby extend our sincere appreciation to Karen Ayala for her collaborative leadership, dedication, and exemplary service. I'll entertain a motion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. The ayes have it. Approve this 23rd day of August 2022. God bless you, Karen Ayala. We love you.
Feels a little bit like a eulogy. But in many ways, we are coming out of this kind of fog with a new understanding of the impact of health. We are coming out with a new understanding of the importance of in-person education. We are coming out with a new understanding that although we all share values, we all kind of have our own venues and our own niche to really be concerned about. And most of these folks I've known only through these one-inch squares on my screen for the last two years. It's the first time I'm seeing most of them in person. And I can tell you, I was listening to the Finance Committee a little bit this morning and talking about business development and economic development. Those don't exist without these folks. They don't exist without a strong commitment to health in your community. And so it was very much our pleasure and really the hard work of staff led by, remember Chris, who was really the quarterback for all of this. If I was the coach, he was the quarterback. And our general manager, Sam Tornatori, and all the support. I could just keep this going for a while now. But thank you. I'm humbled. I'm honored. And this means a great deal. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. So on the Order of Chairman's Remarks, I have an update to share with you on the District 5 vacancy. As you may know, Member Chavez's resignation was effective at the close of business on Tuesday, August 16. The deadline for those interested in applying to fill the seat was also August 16. We received five applications to fill the vacancy created by the departure of Member Chavez. I am currently reviewing the materials submitted and interviewing applicants. The statute that governs this process states, quote, "The vacancy shall be filled within 60 days by appointment of the chair of the county board or board of county commissioners with the advice and consent of the county board," unquote. So the plan is to bring forward a candidate at the first county board meeting in September. Also today, a shout-out, I like to use that term, shout-out. It's popular. Shout-out to our election officials and a great collaboration benefiting our seniors. The DuPage County Recorder, Sheriff, State's Attorney, and Treasurer are hosting a very important learning opportunity for seniors and their families on September 2. The educational event is called Safe from Scams: Protecting Seniors and Their Assets. And this event is being held here in the JTK Administration Building in our first-floor auditorium, and it is free to all. Those who attend will hear from Treasurer Gwen Henry, Recorder Kathleen Carrier, our State's Attorney Bob Berlin, and experts from the Sheriff's Office on how to avoid scams and fraudulent schemes that impact the elderly, disabled, and their families. The scamming business is rampant. It's not just targeting seniors. There's a lot of scamming going on on social media. Attendees will learn how to spot common scams, including phone, internet, dating, and social media scams. They'll receive tips on keeping their money secure and learn how to report financial fraud if they suspect they are a victim. The event runs from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Again, Friday, September 2. We will livestream and record this event, which will be available on our DuPage County YouTube channel to accommodate those who cannot attend in person. There will be information there for all. Thanks to our public officials for working together to help our seniors. Also, a final reminder, if I may, about our Veterans Resource Fair happening a week from today, Tuesday, August 30, from 9 a.m. to 2 p.m. in the Administration Building Auditorium. That concludes my report. We move on to the next order of business entitled Public Comment. I am advised there's, got a couple here, some sheets, and we also have at least one online commenter. First and foremost, John Morsey is here to talk about vote counting. We ask, sir, that you limit your remarks to no more than three minutes, and the entire time dedicated to public comment shall not exceed 30 minutes. With that, Mr. Morsey, please proceed.
Thank you, Dan. My name is John Morsey. I live in Elmers, Illinois, and have for 40 years or so. The issue is nonpartisan. I want to speak about, and I think it affects everybody who was on the ballot this November 6. Both county board members and any county constitutional officers are up for reelection, are seeking the election. It deals with a vote count, vote counting done by, under the office, offices of the county clerk, Gene Camerazak. I've been going through the voter data since 2002. It's never been great as far as the organization goes. It usually comes through, when I see it, comes through a CVS file, which is downloaded. The fact of the matter is that the 2020 general election and this most recent primary election on June 28 did not balance. In other words, there were more electors participated in the 2020 general election than they were canvassed. I do have the detail here. I am going to give it to the appropriate person. I have a thumb drive with the files on it. It's password-protected, but once you want to see it and discuss it, I'll give you the password. The fact is, 491,000 people plus 67 who were canvassed in the general election in 2020, there are now 492,800 and some unique IDs that cast the vote, not just IDs out there, but unique IDs attached to a person who cast the vote in that election. That is in excess of about 1,600 votes of what the canvas was. The current canvas has a negative undervote of 450 votes right now. And this is material that's been received from the County Election Division, which shows that if you add up all the voters who participated with their IDs associated with that vote, it comes under 450 ballots that were cast in the general, or in the primary election. The recourse for you as candidates, not as, you have an oversight, I mean, the county clerk is her own office and officer, you know, I'm sure you have an oversight responsibility here. But as candidates, as men and women who spend their time and money running for this office and take time from their family and go to their supporters and want more money and go door-to-door, you know, you can't rectify it. You can't fix this. And I have an affidavit that was produced a year ago in Grogan v. White, where the Assistant Voter Register, Assistant Voter Register Stephanie Groyenwald said that you cannot identify the electors if they go to the polls on Election Day because the database is a live database and is always subject to change. One, I don't know if that's the whole story or all the truth, but we do know now, and you saw it happen in June, that we have polling books. And those polling books are downloadable, and which means that when California and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and...
Sorry to interrupt, but you're on four minutes now. So please bring your remarks to a close.
All right. You're not going to go, you're not going to be able to find out any more than Bob Grogan or anybody else could find out who voted on Election Day. Simple as that. So I'll leave the data here. We can talk about it later. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Nancy Flannery.
Hello. My name is Nancy Flannery. Some of you know me as the Chair for the Historic Commission in Wheaton. But I'm here as in my role as an election judge. I served for over 10 years in Cook County as an election judge. And wanted to bring this to your attention because I have been an election judge in DuPage County since 2020. When I was a judge in 2020, all the judges received, about a month before the election, the Election Judge Handbook. And it was about 40 pages. And it's kind of a cookbook to tell you what to do in certain situations.
A cookbook from the standpoint of like making food, preparing food.
Right, right. So it tells you, for example, if someone comes in with their mail-in ballot and they decide they want to vote in person, what do you do? How do you handle that situation? Well, you would look on page, I forget the page, and it would say, register them as, give them a provisional vote. Okay. So it's a very prosaic, basic kind of guide to being a judge, how to handle certain situations. Well, I'm here to tell you that for the 2022 primary, there was no Election Judge Handbook. And I kept looking for it. I mean, I had the 2021 was 18, the 2018, 2021s were still on the website, your website, the DuPage County website, but no 2022. And we had gone to entirely new equipment, the Verify Equipment, which was a whole different setup, a whole different way of putting things together. So I knew we were going to need it. So I started FOIA-ing, calling. I even came in and visited the Election Division. And they kept saying, oh, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. Well, it never came. And so, you know, that's not a good thing because you want standardization among procedure with elections. You want all the judges to do the same thing. So I happen to know somebody who works for the county, and I actually ended up getting a copy of the 2022 Election Judge Manual that was completed more than a week before the actual primary, but has never been distributed. So we still don't have a manual. We've got an election coming up in November, and I'm not happy. And you know, you want your citizens to be happy because then everybody's happy. Well, what is my next step? My next step is to ask all of you to put some pressure on the county clerk and come up with a manual, or at least to release the one that she already has. If not, you know, I guess I'll have to go to the Illinois State Board of Elections because I don't believe you're allowed not to have a manual. You're supposed to have some kind of guide for your judges because we all want to do the same thing. So when someone walks in with a mail-in ballot and has decided they want to vote in person, they have to bring the envelope. They have to bring the whole ballot. They have to bring the whole ballot. Well, that was in the 2020 guide, the 2020 Judges Manual, but who knows what's in the 2022? So I'll be back next month to see, and I hope I come back next month to say thank you for getting this done, but if not, I'll be back to scold. So, thank you very much.
Well, I look forward to hearing back from you. Thank you for being a good citizen. Next, we have Jeff Castle.
My name is Jeff Castle. I'm a resident of Glen Allen. At the last board meeting for Milton Township on August 10th, a female District 4 board member made public comment, which is perfectly fine, but in that public comment, she read a lot of story written by a resident of unincorporated Wheaton to our board regarding Milton Township Highway Commissioner Gary Mufeld having to do with having, her having a water drainage issue. You see, this board member has been involved with this person for a while, offering some guidance and helping with this woman's issue. Well, on July 25th, after a lot of back and forth with county employees, Stormwater Authority officials, township and county highway officials, she was given the direction on implying for permits in order to move forward with her project by, via email. Not as a result of anything this county board member did. It was a result of this woman following proper procedure. This was an email that this board member was attached to and received. Yet, 16 days later, she decided to come into our meeting and make public comment requesting our board to put pressure on our Highway Commissioner for him to accommodate this woman, claiming he has been ignoring her and insinuating he has been purposely, purposefully difficult, acting as though that email never occurred. It should also be known that this woman hasn't been responding to requests for information from different departments in a timely manner. In fact, at 7:30, as of 7:30 this morning, DuPage Stormwater hasn't even gotten a response from this woman, this resident, or her engineer on how they will proceed with the work. Gary Mufeld, in my opinion, is one of the hardest-working individuals I know. He's the President of the DuPage County Township Highway Commissioners Association. He works tirelessly to serve the people of our township. I can't see this board member's commentary at our meeting after finding she knew the situation had been resolved as anything but political grandstanding. This is not appreciated at our business meetings where we are talking about and making decisions to positively affect the lives of people within Milton Township. Thank you.
Okay, Max Coolidge.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, county board members. I was here a couple weeks ago. Fortunately, you'd responded. I thank you for that email. Once again, unfortunately, I hadn't, I gave a rebuttal email, I guess, if that's a rebuttal, I don't know, or more inquisition to that. I wasn't smart enough to figure out exactly your response, so I was trying to ask a few more questions. So today, I'm here to just ask if you can respond to that again, and please, for my benefit, make it a little clearer this way that I might not have to show back up to realize what these answers are to this particular animal hospital.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I think that concludes our public comment for people in person. Evan, you've got at least one that was submitted online.
Good morning. First comment is from Karen Rugg. It is a record of attendance only and contains no subject and no comment. The second comment is from Juanita Marguettes. The subject is DuPage County Clerk. Comment reads, during the last Finance Committee meeting of August 9th, 2022, Clerk Gene Kazemiric through Chief of Staff Adam Johnson attempted to submit a proposed budget that was both untimely and unintelligible. The clerk was not physically present to propose her own budget. In fact, she has not physically been to a meeting in over two years. I am at a loss for how this behavior is acceptable to the board, to the county, and to the taxpayer. Today, I suspect that taxpayers will get more of the same from the clerk, excuses for her continued failure to appear, meet deadlines, and hold herself accountable to taxpayers. We deserve answers. We pay her over $160,000 per year. In the private sector, failure to do your job constitutes dismissal. The taxpayers and the county board are still awaiting an explanation from Clerk Gene Kazemiric for her failure to meet the state-imposed deadline to approve new precinct maps and her failure to meet a deadline to file a certified ordinance with the state costing taxpayers up to $4 million, $4 million. DuPage County taxpayers deserve a competent and accountable clerk. That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Steve Militello. Subject is 8/9/2022 Finance Committee Meeting. Comment reads, I am writing about the county's Finance Committee meeting of August 9th, 2022. It was great to see Darlene Rossetti, Regional Superintendent of DuPage County Schools, make her last budget presentation for the Regional Office of Education. It was informative, thorough, and gave me hope for what's to come for our children during fiscal year 2023. Her leadership will be missed. Due to having COVID, DuPage Clerk Kazemiric was not able to personally appear at the meeting to present the county clerk's budget. Her Chief of Staff, Adam Johnson, appeared in the clerk's stead to present a budget that received tardy, parenthetical, July 5th instead of July 1st deadline, end parenthetical, and irresponsible, incomprehensible by the Finance Committee. In the clerk's defense, Mr. Johnson blamed these shortcomings on the county's Finance Department. These excuses were eerily similar to the excuses utilized last May when the clerk cost the county up to $4 million in lost tax revenue because of her failure to meet a state deadline. Because the Finance Committee was unable to proceed with the clerk's budget as presented, this matter was continued to August 23rd, 2022. I am hopeful that the clerk will personally appear at the August 23rd, 2022 meeting, as the clerk has not personally attended a Finance Committee meeting or county board meeting in well over 2.5 years. We pay the clerk over $163,000 per year. DuPage residents demand competency and accountability. That's the end of that comment. Next comment is from Karen Rugg. There is no subject and no comment. And the last comment is from John Morrissey, who spoke in person today regarding elections. That is the end of the public comment.
Okay. So that concludes our public comment. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. I will seek a motion to approve and second, and then I will read the items as is required. So do we have a motion? Motion and a second? So the consent items are as follows. A, DuPage County Board, regular meeting, Tuesday, August 9th, 2022. B, payment of claims, 8/5/2022 pay list. C, payment of claims, 8/9/2022 pay list. D, payment of claims, 8/12/2022 pay list. E, payment of claims, 8/15/2022 auto debit pay list. F, wire transfers, 8/11/2022 IDOR WTF. G, payment of claims, 8/16/2022 pay list. H, wire transfers, 8/15/2022 wire transfer. I, consent item, Recorder's Monthly Revenue Statement, July 2022. J, consent item, change orders to various contracts as specified in the attached packet. That concludes all the items. There's a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, Mr. Pierce, which is called the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani. Member Eckoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman. Member Tornatori. And Member Zay.
Okay, thank you. Those items are approved. We move on to the next order of business, business entitled County Board. Member Ashley Selman for a committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any updates under county board today.
Okay, thank you. On to the next order of business, Finance. Member Chaplin.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of FIR 032022, Resolution, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Violent Crime Victims Assistance Program Special Grant in the amount of $18,996.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman. Member Tornatori.
Aye.
And Member Zay.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce, Member Chaplin? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I've heard from a couple of people who watch our meetings via YouTube that they can't hear the votes, so I, and I just didn't do it myself, but if people could click on their microphone to cast their votes so that people that are viewing these meetings after the fact-
How about if I just announce if the resolution is adopted? Would that be good?
It works for me.
Okay. Yeah, and then if it's like a vote that you have to add it up and tally it, then usually the clerk will announce the tally, you know what I mean? That's good. So that's a good point. Thank you. Uh, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 032122, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Department of Human Services Supportive Housing Program Grant, Intergovernmental Agreement in the amount of $311,347.
Second motion for a rule? Leave. Leave is granted, which means for the viewing public that we've adopted the previous roll call, so that resolution passed unanimously. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 032422, Resolution, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Home Weatherization Assistance Program Grants Intergovernmental Agreement in the amount of $487,184.
Leave is granted. Resolution is adopted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 033022, Resolution, Recommendation for the Approval of an Extension of the Emergency Solutions Grant, COVID-19 Response Agreement.
Second motion for a rule?
Community Services.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 033222, Resolution, Authorization to Transfer $44,266 in Budget to Facilities Management for Fiscal Year 2022.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 033322, Resolution, Acceptance and Appropriation of the Illinois Home Weatherization Program Assistance Program State Grant in the amount of $349,639.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 033422, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the 2011 Drainage Bond Debt Service Fund, $3,598, and Authorization to Transfer Funds in the 2011 Drainage Bond Debt Fund, Debt Service Fund, and Authorization to Transfer $252,087 in the 211 Drainage Bond Debt Fund Service Fund to the General Fund for Fiscal Year 2022.
Leave is granted, which means the resolution is adopted unanimously. Please proceed, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 033522, Resolution, Delegating Permit Related Fee to Fee Payment, Approval to DuPage County Chief's Financial Officer.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 033622, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the Water Connection Assistance Program in the amount of $1 million.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 033722, Resolution, Budget Transfers 8/23/2022, Various Companies and Accounting Units.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 033822, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the Local American Rescue Plan Act Program Sanitary Districts, $2 million.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 034122, Resolution, Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with Sanitary Districts for the Use of ARPA Funds for the Local American Rescue Plan Act Program in the Amount of $2 million.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIR 034422, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the Local American Rescue Plan Act Program for Fire Protection Districts in the Amount of $434,149.
Leave is granted. Member, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 034522, Resolution, Amendment to Resolution FIR 03922 for the Approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement with DuPage County Fire Protection Districts for the Use of ARPA Funds for the Local American Rescue Plan Act Program for a New Program, Total Amount of $3,558,065.
Leave is granted.
Thank, I move, yes, thank you. I move to amend FIR 033922, Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund by Striking and Replacing $4,809,676 with $3,249,676.
Okay. Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Now, I move to approve as amended FIR 039922, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the Local American Rescue Plan Act Program for Townships. Okay?
Leave is granted.
Thank you.
Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I'm moving on to Item P, where I move to amend FIR 034022, a Resolution Approving the Intergovernmental with the DuPage County Townships by Striking and Replacing $4,809,676 with $3,249,676 in the resolution in, and in Exhibit B.
Leave is granted.
Okay, I move to approve FIR 34022 as amended, Resolution Approving Intergovernmental Agreement with DuPage County Townships for the Use of ARPA Funds for the Local American Rescue Plan Act in the Amount of $3,249,676.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 034222, Resolution, Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for Choose DuPage to Participate in the Chicagoland Economic Partnership Initiative in the Amount of $250,000.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 034322, Resolution Approving the Use of ARPA Funds for a Grant Agreement with Choose DuPage to Participate in the Chicagoland Economic Partnership Initiative in the Amount of $750,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIP 024522, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order Between the County of DuPage and Rock Fusco &amp; Connolly LLC to Provide Consultation Services Related to Collective Bargaining Matters for Labor Negotiations for the Period of December 1st, 2023, 2022 through November 30th, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
It's been a motion, a second, a request for leave. Leave is granted. The resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, Member Chaplin. On to the order of Animal Services. Member Krajewski.
Thank you, Chairman. I move on ASP 0233-22, which is a recommendation for the Approval of a Contract with Covatris North America LLC for the Purchase of Our Veterinary, Pharmaceuticals, and Medical Supplies for DuPage County Animal Services, not to exceed $74,000.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
And Member Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Thank you, Member Krajewski. On to the order of Development. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of DCO 45-22, Ordinance Zoning 223, approving a variation to reduce the corner yard setback from 30 feet to approximately 19.5 feet for a burglar.
It's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart.
Aye.
Member DeCiani.
Aye.
Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Bless you.
Member Schworzy.
Aye.
And Member Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. On to the order of Economic Development. Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to combine items A, B, C, and D.
And a motion to combine. Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Those nay, the ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move Approval of Authorization of Overnight Travel for a To Be Announced Award Winner, $439.75. Authorization for Overnight Travel for Career Counselor, $398.50. Authorization for Overnight Travel for the Executive Director, $417.25. And Authorization for Overnight Travel for the Workforce Board Member, for a Total of $359.75.
Spend a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Salman?
Aye.
Member Tornatori?
Aye.
Member Zay?
Aye.
Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Covert? Member Desart? Member Diciani? Member Ekoff? Member Garcia? Member Hart? Member Krajewski? Member LaPlante? Member Ozog? Member Pachalski? Member Renahan? Member Rutledge? And Member Schworzy?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Ashley Salman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on Change Order Amendment to Purchase Order 4932-1SERV, An Amendment to Parents Alliance Employment Project for a New Total of $502,160.
Leave is granted. Member Salman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last is Change Order Amendment to Purchase Order 4931-1SERV issued to Parents Alliance Employment Project for a New Total of $204,484.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Salman. On to the Order of Environmental. Member Rutledge for a committee update.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. The information about climate change continues to be more dire every day. The European heat waves, the water levels in the West, we're running out of water. We're, and I kind of like food, so we need to start doing things like that. But I found this quote from Deloitte, one of the premier consulting firms in the country, and I thought it was appropriate for today. "Time is no longer running out to act on climate change. It's up, and the global economy is at a crossroads. But if the world acts now to rapidly achieve net zero emissions by mid-century, the transformation of the economy would set the world up for stronger economic growth by 2070. Such a transformation could increase the size of the world economy by $43 trillion in net present value terms from 2021 to 2070. We have the technologies, business models, and policy approaches today to deliver rapid decarbonization and limit global warming to as close to 1.5 centigrade by century's end. We cannot afford to waste another year, another month, debating the merits of doing something versus doing nothing. As leaders, every choice, every day, is a chance to speed the realization of that vision." I thought this was appropriate this afternoon. We'll be asking for the Board approval about solar panels on one of our buildings. And yes, I understand the cost versus return, but I think the dollar amount should not be the only consideration that we consider for this project. We have a very generous donor that is helping us to seed this. I think as leaders, we can turn this into an educational element to start walking the walk on climate change. So, I'm going to ask for your support of that project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On to the Order of ETSB. Member Schworzy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Board, for allowing me to participate remotely. I'm in California after the sudden passing of my father, so... And then also thank you to Member Ekoff for handling ETSB duties at the Finance Meeting. I move to approve Item ETSR 5722. This is a Resolution Approving the County Board Execution of an Intergovernmental Agreement on behalf of the Emergency Telephone System Board to provide replacement radios for end-of-life, end-of-support radios on the DuPage Emergency Dispatch Interoperable Radio System to its members.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Schworzy?
Aye.
Member Salman? Member Tornatori? Member Zay? Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Covert? Member Desart? Member Diciani? Member Ekoff? Member Garcia? Member Hart? Member Krajewski? Member LaPlante? Member Ozog? Member Pachalski? Member Renahan? And Member Rutledge?
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. On to the next order of Business Health and Human Services. Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of HHSR 32522, Recommendation and Approval for First Modification of an Emergency Solutions Grant. This is COVID-related to 360U Services, increasing the amount by $185,000 and extending the project completion date through August 15, 2023.
Spend a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Renahan?
Aye.
Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Schworzy?
Aye.
Member Salman? Member Tornatori?
Aye.
Member Zay?
Aye.
Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Covert? Member Desart? Member Diciani? Member Ekoff? Member Garcia? Member Hart? Member Krajewski? Member LaPlante? Member Ozog? And Member Pachalski?
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of HHSR 32622, Resolution Recommendation for Approval of First Modification to a Community Development Block Grant with 360U Services. This is changing the scope of work by increasing staffing and extending the project completion date through August 15, 2023.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
I move approval of HHSR 32722, Resolution Recommendation for Approval of a Community Development Block Grant Funding Increase with Carroll Stream Park District, increasing amount by $400,000 for a Total Award of $1 million for Improvements to Community Park.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of HHSR 32822, Resolution in Support of Agreement between the County of DuPage and ATEC Ambulance for Ambulance and Medical Transportation Services for the CARES Center.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
I move approval of HHSR 33122, Resolution Recommendation for Approval of Renewal of the IGA between County of DuPage and Veterans Assistance Commission of DuPage County through December 31st, 2022.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
I move approval of HHSP 23422, Recommendation for Approval of Contract to Lake Shore Dairy, Inc. for Fluid Dairy for the CARES Center Cafeteria Cafes Located at JTK Administration Building and Judicial Office Facility, September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023, not to exceed $116,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of HHSP 250-22, ordering Resolution issued to Hagerty Ford to Furnish and Deliver 1, 2021, Ford Ranger for the Weatherization Program, $44,759 for Community Services.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of Authorization for Overnight Travel for the Community Services Director to go to NACED Annual Conference in El Paso County, Colorado, September 18th through 23rd, 2022, $2,724.50.
Leave is granted. Beautiful area, El Paso County, Colorado. On to the next order of Business Judicial Public Safety. Member Renahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPSP 23522, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Order to HOV Services for Office Site Document Scanning Services for the Circuit Court Clerk's Office in the Amount of $273,884.10.
Leave is granted. Oh, sorry, sorry. Yes, we have to take a roll call. For all of you out there in the listening world of DuPage and beyond, we need to take a roll call in the very beginning of each committee report. So, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Renahan?
Aye.
Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Schworzy?
Aye.
Member Salman? Member Tornatori? Member Zay? Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Covert? Member Desart? Member Diciani? Member Ekoff? Member Garcia? Member Hart? Member Krajewski? Member LaPlante? Member Ozog? And Member Pachalski?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of JPSP 23622, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to Agilent Technologies for the Purchase of the Agilent Extractor Ion MS for the Office Crime Lab, not to exceed $111,044.72, Sheriff's Office.
Leave is granted, and there's been a motion and leave granted to adopt the previous roll call, which was in a unanimous roll call in support of it, so the resolution is adopted. Please proceed. Member Renahan?
I move approval of JPSP 23722, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to Kruger International for Purchase of Audience Seating for the 18th Judicial Circuit Court Courtrooms,
Leave is granted.
I move on Change Order JPSP 68A-21, Recommendation for Approval or Amendment to Resolution JPSP 6821, Amending Purchase Order to a Contract Issued to Trinity Services Group to Provide Inmate and Officer Meals for the Jail, May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 22, to Increase that to $34,041.27 for the Sheriff.
Leave is granted.
I move on Change Order JPSP 361A-21, Amendment to Resolution JPSP 36121 to Sentinel Offender Services due to an Increase in Probation in Pre-Trial Cases, increasing the contract by $100,000 for probation and court services.
Leave is granted.
Move Approval of an Authorization for Overnight Travel for the OHSEM Operations Coordinator, Local Emergency Planning Commission Chair, to Travel to Springfield, September 6th through 9th, 2022, to do IAMA Training Summit.
Leave is granted.
And I move to combine Items 16, GHIJKL and M. These are all requests for travel for OHSEM Reservists to Attend National Guard Training in and Around Peoria, September 9th through 11th, with no cost to the county.
There's been a motion to combine Items F through M. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
G.
G through M. G through M. Okay. All those in favor say aye. Those nay, the ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed.
All right, thank you. So, I move to approve Items G through M.
Leave is granted.
I think we have to do a roll call.
Roll call. Got to do a roll call, because we combined them. You messed up. That's what happens. Consequences. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Renahan?
Aye.
Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Schworzy?
Aye.
Member Salman? Member Tornatori? Member Zay?
Aye.
Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Covert? Member Desart? Member Diciani? Member Ekoff? Member Garcia? Member Hart? Member Krajewski? Member LaPlante? Member Ozog? And Member Pachalski?
Thank you. Thank you, Member Renahan. On to the Order of Legislative. Member Desart.
Thank you, Chairman. On this morning's agenda, I ask for your favorable consideration of resolutions to renew our two state lobbying firms, Chip Humes of Roger Marquardt &amp; Company, and Dave Sullivan and Mark Polis of Rouchy &amp; Sullivan Strategies, and one federal lobbyist, Bill Vining of BGR Group. I think you'll agree with me that they've done an excellent job of keeping us informed on state and federal issues throughout the year. They're accessible. They always pick up the phone whenever I call and have established the relationships necessary to advance county priorities in both Springfield and in Washington, DC. With regard to the state legislature, it is important to have a strong team in Springfield who can react quickly to provide our delegation and other members of the General Assembly with the information that they need to advocate on the counties we have. For example, this past session, legislators supporting the puppy mill industry continually posted one-hour committee hearings amendments in an effort to repeal the current statute. Our lobbyists acted quickly in these instances to defeat these attempts to repeal the legislation. At the federal level, Bill Vining has proved to be a valuable resource to members and to staff interpreting Treasury guidelines for both the CARES Act and the ARPA money to provide overviews of critical federal legislation throughout the year, arrange meetings for members when in DC, and keeping us updated with weekly reports. In our online County Board Packet, there is a list of accomplishments from our lobbyists. I'm sure you all read them from all three lobbying firms this past year, what they've accomplished for us this past year, and I would appreciate your support. So, with that, I move to approve LEG-P-0228-22, A Recommendation for the Approval of a County Contract to Rouchy &amp; Sullivan Strategies LLC to Provide Consulting Services as Lobbyists Representing DuPage County before the Illinois General Assembly and State Executive Branch. This contract covers the period of September 1st, 2022, through August 31st, 2023, for County Board for a Contract Total Amount Not to Exceed $50,000. This is for our lobbyist, Dave Sullivan and Mark Polis.
Spend a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Well, can I just make a comment, please?
Oh, sure.
Oh, thank you, thank you. So, I just wanted to compliment Member Desart on her leadership on the Legislative Committee. I'm voting aye on these for all the reasons that she gave in her statement. You know, they've been very accessible. We've been able to see what they're doing. We have communications with them. We get a list of their accomplishments. So, I think that's been a really great leadership and just you've done a lot with that committee. So, I appreciate it, and I feel much more comfortable voting for these now.
You used to be vehemently opposed to lobbyists.
I was, because we never had...
Funny how things change.
Because we never had any information on them. I never, I never could get any...
We have them in the committee. We see them all the time.
I understand.
We never did. We never had any information. So, she's done a good job.
Spend a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Desart?
Aye.
Member Diciani? Member Ekoff? Member Garcia? Member Hart? Member Krajewski? Member LaPlante? Member Ozog? Member Pachalski? Member Renahan? Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Schworzy?
Aye.
Member Salman? Member Tornatori?
Aye.
Member Zay? Member Chaplin?
Aye.
And Member Covert.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Desart?
Thank you, Chairman. I move to approve LEG-P-0229-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a County Contract to Roger C. Marquardt &amp; Company, Inc. to Provide Consulting Services as Lobbyists Representing DuPage County before the Illinois General Assembly and State Executive Branch. This contract covers the period of September 15th, 2022, through September 14th, 2023, for County Board for a Contract Total Amount Not to Exceed $90,000. This is for our lobbyist, Chip Hume.
Leave is granted. Member Desart?
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve LEG-P-0230-22. It's a Recommendation for the Approval of a County Contract to BGR Government Affairs LLC to Provide Consulting Services as Lobbyists Representing DuPage County before the US Congress and the Federal Executive Branch for DuPage County's Division of Transportation, Stormwater Management, and all other county departments and agencies. This contract covers the period of September 1st, 2022, through August 31st, 2023, for the County Board for a Contract Total Amount Not to Exceed $80,000. This is for our lobbyist, Bill Vining.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Desart. On to the Order of Public Works. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for Approval of PWR 032922, Intergovernmental Agreement between the County of DuPage and the Forest Preserve District of DuPage for the Transport and Treatment of Leachate from Blackwell Landfill of the period August 23rd, 2022, through December 31st, 2032.
Spend a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Ozog?
Yes.
Member Pachalski? Member Renahan? Member Rutledge?
Aye.
Member Schworzy?
Aye.
Member Salman? Member Tornatori? Member Zay? Member Chaplin?
Aye.
Member Covert? Member Desart? Member Diciani? Member Ekoff? Member Garcia? Member Hart? Member Krajewski? And Member LaPlante?
Member Ozog?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for Approval of PWP 024022, Agreement between the County of DuPage and Fairgram Engineering and Environmental for On-Call Professional Engineering Services for Energy and Demand Response for Multiple DuPage County Facilities for Public Works and Facilities Management, period August 23rd, 2022, to November 30th, 2025. Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $90,000, Professional Services Vetted Through a Qualified Based Professional Selection Process.
Leave is granted. Member Ozog?
I move for Approval of FMP 024122, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to Fox Valley Fire and Safety for the Preventative Maintenance, Testing, and Repair of Non-Eddward System Technology Fire Alarm and Fire Safety Systems for County Facilities for the Period August 28th, 2022, through August 27th, 2023, for a Total Contract Amount Not to Exceed $158,945, per Lowest Responsible Bid.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move for Approval of FMP 02422, Ratification of an Emergency Procurement to Fleece Oil Company to Provide Non-Highway Number Two Red-Dyed Diesel Fuel
to Fleece Oil Company to provide non-highway number-two red-dyed diesel fuel for facilities, management, power plant, generator, for a total contract amount not to exceed $31,261.05, emergency procurement based upon being necessary to minimize or prevent serious disruptions in service.
For the record, I think it's Fies.
I'm sorry.
If you were Mr. Fies, you probably would want to make sure we made that record. Fies. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I now move to waive the first reading of ordinance PWO004422.
Motion and a second. With leave of the body, what are we seeking to do here? Adapt some amendment?
Waive the first reading of the ordinance.
So there's been a motion and a second. Any objection? All say aye. If there's no objection, nay. The ayes have it. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I move for approval of PWO004422, an ordinance acceptance of the substantive and technical changes to Chapter 36 of the DuPage County Water Supply Distribution and Wastewater Treatment Ordinance.
Is there a request for leave? Leave is granted.
Okay. Item F, I move for approval of overnight travel, request to have one facilities management staff member attend Metasys Systems Extended Architecture for Building Engineers course in Louisville, Kentucky, November 6th, 2022, through November 11th, 2022, for an approximate cost not to exceed $3,913.
Leave is granted.
And I move for approval of authorization for overnight travel, authorization to require or to have one facilities manager staff member attend Metasys Systems as well, December 12th, 2020, through December 15th, 22, approximate cost not to exceed $2,980. Of course, we'll instruct how to connect field equipment controllers.
Leave is granted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. On to the order of stormwater, Member Zay.
No update, Mr. Chairman.
Okey-dokey. On to the order of technology, Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 243-22, so recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Infoware, which supports our ERP software. Contract goes from November 13th, 2022, through November 12th, 2023. Total is $215,562.98, and this is sole source.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori. Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Eckoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Pachalski. Member Rannahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And member Schwartzy.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 244-22, it's a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Gartner. This supports subscriptions for our IT team. Contract goes from October 1st of 2022 through September 30th, 23, total $88,322, and this is sole source.
Leave is granted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 246-22, a recommendation into CDWG for annual maintenance and support of our Aritas Net Backup Software, September 24th, 2022, through September 23rd, 2023, for a total of $46,038.69.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 247-22, it's a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to AT&amp;T Mobility, supporting our AirWatch Mobile Device Management System, July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023, for a total of $34,860.
Leave is granted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 248-22, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Car Company for management of our county GPS Core Site, September 1st, 2022, through August 31st, 2023, for a total of $39,500, and this is sole source.
Leave is granted. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 249-22, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to PSR Incorporated for our IBM Business Class Server and Enterprise Storage, this is September 11th, 2022, through September 10th, 2023, for a total of $48,304, and this is sole source.
Leave is granted. Member Selman.
Thank you. And lastly, I move for a change order, TEP 91A-22, it's an amendment to resolution, TEP 91-22, issued to SHI International Corp., supporting our Zendesk customer service.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Member Selman. On to the order of transportation, Member Don Pachalski.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I would move to approve DTR0322-22. It's an intergovernmental agreement between the County of DuPage and City of Naperville to extend road resurfacing beyond the county right-of-way on multiple side streets along Hobson Road within the city. County to reimburse $19,539.19.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Rannahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzy.
Aye.
Member Selman. Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Eckoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. And member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Pierce, Mr. Pachalski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTR0323-22, an intergovernmental agreement between the County of DuPage and the Lisle Township Road District to extend road resurfacing beyond county rights-of-way and multiple side streets along Hobson Road within Lisle Township. County to reimburse $14,765.72.
Leave is granted. Member Pachalski.
Move to approve DTP0238-22, recommendation for approval of contract to LRS Holdings LLC, DBA Lakeshore Recycling Systems LLC for solid waste disposal services-
Leave is granted.
-and needed for Department of Transportation not to exceed $45,000. Move to approve DTP0239-22, recommendation for approval of contract issued to Santa Cruz Associates, DBA Santa Cruz Land Acquisition, Professional Right-of-Way Negotiation Services as needed for a contract amount of $100,000. I'm on E, and I would move to dis- Sorry.
Sorry about that. Leave is granted.
On item E, I move to discharge the committee, Mr. Chairman.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All nay. The ayes have it. Please proceed.
Okay, then move to approve DT0-0046-22, ordinance for the alteration of a speed limit on County Farm Road from 300 feet south of Hawthorne Lane to Route 64 from 45 to 40 miles per hour.
Really?
A speed trap.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Is there a request for leave? Leave is granted. Member Pachalski.
Move to approve amendment to DTR0306A-22, amendment to a resolution to authorize the vehicle transportation to process FY 2023 and FY 2024 recommended vehicle replacement purchase orders, broadening the scope of vehicles and cooperatives.
Leave is granted. Member Pachalski.
Move to approve DTR0232C-14, amendment to a resolution for local agency agreement to the Illinois Department of Transportation for improvements on Fabian Parkway at Illinois Route 38 to decrease the funding in amount of $4,313.1, closing and a final county cost of $1,588,346.99.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve amendment to DTR0338A-21, issued to Hurley Heen Mid Cotton Company for improvements along St. Charles Road over the east branch of the DuPage River to decrease the funding in amount of $12,587.6, closing and resulting county cost of $250,359.24.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve amendment to DTR0338B-20, amendment to a resolution issued to Schroeder Asphalt Services, Inc., for the Lisle Township 2020 Road Maintenance Program to decrease the funding $2,697,38, closing and the final contract cost being $801,157.62.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve amendment to DTR040A-20, amendment to a resolution issued to Brothers Asphalt for the 2020 Downers Grove Road Maintenance Program to decrease the funding $1,128.8, resulting in final contract of $782,260.43.
Leave is granted.
Motion to approve amendment to DTR0953A-18, amendment to a resolution to the City of Darien for mowing of grass and vegetation growing on roads and rights-of-ways under jurisdiction of county details to decrease the funding $30 and decrease the cost to $123,150.
Leave is granted.
And last amendment is moved on DTR0522A-21, amendment resolution to a local public agency agreement to county details in Illinois Department of Transportation for improvements along 87th Street, a county adjustment.
Yes, Member Desart.
Thank you. I'm sorry that Chris Snyder left, but our Chairman Pachalski is still here. I just want to say, you know, how fast Chairman Pachalski is talking. We've got so many road projects underway right now, and I just want to say our Transportation Department rocks here at DuPage County. We have so many things going on, and it's a thanks to Chris Snyder and Chairman Pachalski. Good job, guys.
I think it's the committee. We've done a lot of things. We've got a lot of projects on the street, and the electorate's seeing that with the great job that we're doing in DOT. Thank you for that. I think, did we need to, did we do a vote on that?
There's a motion and a second, and a request for leave. Leave is granted. Member Pachalski.
Mr. Chairman, can I combine Agenda Items N to U, which are all authorizations for overnight travel?
There's a motion, and is there a second? There's a second. All those in favor say aye. All those nay. The ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed, sir.
I would move to approve Agenda Items M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, which are all authorization for overnight travel. It's either Bloomington or Effingham, Illinois, for various members of the Department of Transportation.
There's been a motion and a second, and a request for leave. Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Pachalski. A very fine report. Very fine. And I think that concludes our committee reports. We move on to the next order of business entitled "Old Business." Old, Member Chaplin.
I don't know if this is old or new business, but I did need to, we do have a special call at 1 o'clock this afternoon, and I am aware that some members cannot be here for the meeting. They want to zoom in. But could I see a show of hands, because I'm going to need 10 people to be here to have a quorum, to hold our special call. So I just need to make sure that we have 10. Yeah. So, okay, we'll be fine. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, everyone. Thank you. That's all.
Should have served lunch. Maybe bring some sandwiches in, you know?
Next time. Thank you.
A little incentive. Member Desart.
Thank you. I just want to, through public comments the last couple of weeks, I'd like to really clear up a false narrative. Most county clerks in the state of Illinois do not attend board meetings. Taking votes is seen mostly as a clerical function, and the clerk in most of Illinois' counties have more important work to do than telling votes. For example, this was in yesterday's Capital Facts. DuPage County Clerk Jean Kazmeric announces Vote Anywhere Election Day voting for 2022. DuPage will be the first county in Illinois to launch the option for voters to cast a ballot in any one of its 263 polling places, instead of limiting the choice to a voter's precinct polling place or voting center. DuPage County is the first county in Illinois to be able to offer that. And those are the kinds of initiatives that our clerk is working on. Again, she does not need to be here at the meetings, and as most clerks are not in the state of Illinois, they're not using their time unwisely by just doing clerical vote counting. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else seeking recognition on the order of "Old Business"? Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, just to follow up on Member Desart's, and that's all fine, but, you know, we did ask for an update on how the new equipment that we bought performed during the primary. We'd never got one. This new initiative of the Vote Anywhere, we asked how that went. Could we get any numbers on how many people actually participated that voted outside of their precinct? We didn't get anything. So, again, it would be nice if we didn't have to read stuff on Capital Facts, that we could actually get an update from our clerk. But, again, the tradition of this county was always the county clerk attended the meetings and did roll, and did the work with the clerk. But, again, it would be nice if we just got an update on some of the questions that we had, and I know a lot of us had questions on. The filling in of the blanks with those smaller pens was a problem. Could we go from a square to a circle? Things like that, just little things that we could have input. But, again, we haven't had that opportunity. So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the point is well made, right? I mean, we're a collaborative body historically. We like to think we're better than all the other counties. We do things right here, and it is kind of disappointing to have so lack of little communication. Member Desart.
I was just going to comment on Member Zay's comments, and I could totally appreciate that. You're absolutely right. Absolutely right. Everything you said is spot on. I was just talking about the clerical function of counting votes. It's not necessary for her to be a person.
Okay. Member Krajewski.
Sir, I guess while we're talking about it, I mean, it doesn't bother me that, as long as somebody's up there taking role, that needs to be done. But, again, I know, Chairman, I asked and you asked many months ago about having just a clerk come, because I experienced a few issues with the election, and also had some people call me, and I don't know if they were widespread or just unique to my situation. I did raise it again two weeks ago. Again, in my polling place, there was long delays, 45 minutes plus. They ran out of toner cartridges, and they mentioned that a couple of times that happened. Again, maybe that was just that one. Maybe it happened all over, but I guess, you know, any of these issues that came up. We also had one, I'm still waiting for their legal counsel to get back with regards to Timberlake. But then there was also issue I raised last week in Hinsdale, where an individual got a ballot that was printed out, lived in Hinsdale, but from Wayne up in that area. I know that was referred by one of the state's attorneys, I think Connor, I think I mentioned last time, that you received, you know, anything that was out in the field, and maybe you could let us know at least what you received in the field as problems, since the clerk still has not come up and, you know, given us these. Again, there could be just a few minor ones here and there. You're always going to have issues out there, but if they're widespread, is there something we need to do? Again, I don't know, because we haven't heard. So every time, I guess, I'm asking.
Yes, he does. And I think it's very important what you do. It's not just some meaningless clerical responsibility. I think it's very significant. Anyone else seeking recognition? Mr. DeCiani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was very nice to see our superintendents here today, and what Karen Ayala has done with the Health Department. The tests have stayed, kept our kids in school, which, Member, Chairman Tornatori, appreciate your leadership there with the Health Department, getting them imposed for our kids. One key person that we're missing today was Scott Helton, and I couldn't go without talking about Scott and his leadership. And Scott Helton was superintendent of District 88, who passed during COVID, but he offered his schools often, his vaccination centers, and he's a great man. So, wanted to make sure that we acknowledged Mr. Helton and his leadership and his being missed here in DuPage County. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you. He was an outstanding leader. Anyone else on the order of "Old Business"? Old business. Seeing none, hearing none, we move on to the next order entitled "New Business." Member Desart.
Thank you. New, fresh, exciting business. I just wanted to mention this. I gave Chair Rutledge a chance to say this, but she didn't. So let me say this. Our partner, I'm so excited that one of our transportation partners, Metro, on Wednesday, announced that it was creating battery-powered locomotives to demonstrate the agency's commitment to innovation and cleaner energy. The board, the Metro Board, approved a first-of-its-kind plan to convert up to six of Metro's oldest diesel locomotives to zero emission battery power. The cost of that conversion is $34.6 million, and will take about three and a half years. But, you know, like you said, it's not cheap to go green, but it's important that we move in that direction. So, congratulations to our transportation partner, Metro, for taking this initiative.
Very nice. Thank you, Member Desart. And you would have thought of it, I mean, ordinarily. That's all. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know it's not customary to respond to public comment, but the Milton Township trustee who was here today was referring to me. On August 9th, at the request of a constituent, I spoke in front of the Milton Township Board. I first met this constituent in February, and I visited her basement. She was not able to be there August 9th, and they only meet once a month, so she asked me to read her letter. And very briefly, she, first of all, was not there because her father-in-law had passed away. Bottom line, and she wrote this, "Can you help me solve my persistent flooding issues by encouraging Highway Commissioner Gary Milfelt to approve plans for a catch basin in my yard? Below is the backstory." She's been there since 2011. She had no water before 2017, when a new home was built at the back of her house. Water has nowhere to go. I visited her basement. She has six sump pumps operating all the time. She works in her basement. It's very anxiety-producing, we could say. "They've given me a variety of reasons why they can't help me, even though I've offered to pay for everything. Four of my five immediate neighbors have the sort of connection I'm asking for. The fifth neighbor has no basement, okay? I've been in extensive correspondence with this Milton Township Highway Department since November 2021. Not once have I received an email back from Commissioner Gary Milfelt. He isn't even here at the board meeting tonight. The Highway Commission exists, but there is no actual commission, only a commissioner." As a taxpayer, and she's also only received communication from Mr. Milfelt through the township's law firm. As a taxpayer, I'm horrified at the professional services fees being racked up because Mr.